Insurance settlement, when the tree fell on it, the insurance is providing $100,000, but it needs $150,000 worth of work. So I guess we're just not fully, we weren't...
Okay, it is six, and we are going to start this board meeting. We're calling the meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If I could call Mills Sanders and Alexandra Dixon to come up and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, are y'all ready? Okay, when y'all ready, get going.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. Can y'all come up here for just a minute? For each one of y'all, I have the official City of Hernando pin that y'all can wear on your clothes, or your hat, or wherever. Thank y'all for being here and doing that for us. Alderman Miller, would you lead us in our invocation?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, before we do anything, I want to say we are so thankful for this day that you have given us. We pray now, Heavenly Father, we go through and look at the welfare of this city, that we make the right decision, that you'll be pleased and satisfied. We just thank you, Lord, for the opportunity you've given each and us, each and every one of us, the opportunity to serve in whatever capacity it might be. Ask you, Lord, continue to bless our souls wherever they might be. And we just thank you, Lord, for all your many different blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We have a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion passes. Item five is to approve the docket of claim numbers listed on your agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And the motion passes. Next is to approve the minutes from the regular mayor and board meeting on August 15th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. On item seven, the minutes from the recessed meeting, we got the names mixed up. I want to make note that Alderman Piper was not here, and Alderman Harris was here. So I just wanted to make that change, if someone could approve those minutes with that change.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Motion on the consent agenda.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion passes. Item nine is the personnel docket. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Personnel docket passes. Item 10 is a resolution declaring September 25th through 29th as Stormwater Awareness Week.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next is the request by Wesley Meadows for allowance of food trucks at their carnival in the meadows. This is something they do for the residents, and with our new ordinance in place, they needed permission to include the food trucks in that carnival. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on that? If not, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 12 is the approval of food trucks on the square for the Homewood Hometown Headliners Festival every Thursday in September, and the Red Door Market at the Armory December 9th through 10th. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 13, Austin, would you present that very quickly, just so everybody's clear on what it is?
Yes, sir. Have y'all been staying with the museum, or is it...
You just come on up.
You got you.
Yes, sir. So we've activated the project for the Wacker, or excuse me, the McMillan Overlay, and with the school opening, it involved 25 MDOTs trying to expedite as much as possible. And so with the amount of PE services for the project under $250,000, MDOT lets us select from the list, and we choose three terms, and then bring the proposal to the board. So it's called small purchase. And so with Wacker preparing the preliminary and final process, and the projects are very familiar, so we felt comfortable selecting them for design services for the overlay.
Okay. Now, can I have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. While you're up there, Austin, if you could do number 14 for us.
Yes, sir. As a part of the building code update, we've had a committee formed on. We've been going through the nuts and bolts, and the commonly addressed problems we see is going through plan review. And one of the most frequent things we experience in plan review, starting in new businesses, especially small businesses, is drinking fountains. And so in any new renovation or change of use, bringing it down to required, and basically all occupant loads is about 15, almost every business. And with COVID and some complaints we've seen from the business community, we thought it was legitimate to increase the occupant load, just to take us out of the situation and put it back on business. If they wanted less than 100 people, then they can have it, but we don't require it until you get to 100 at the occupant load. And so the full IPC section's in your staff report, and we met with Tony, and that 100 occupant load came from just around the number that he felt would kick in auditoriums and gymnasiums and things that needed the drinking fountains, but a small business that in a lot of chances will never be used without being a necessary problem. So in front of y'all, just amend the plumbing code to up the occupant load for a drinking fountain requirement from 15 to 100.
Anybody on the board have questions or concerns on that item?
I think it's a good idea.
If not, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion passes. Next is the approval to donate $500 at the request of Isabella for Hernando High School Choir to attend the Memphis Music Choir Teacher Conference performance in Hattiesburg for the purpose of supporting the development, promotion, and coordination of the arts in Hernando.
Does there anybody here to speak to that?
We had a student and the director approach us about that.
May I make a motion to approve?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. Item 16 is the approval of the agreement with Hills Pet Nutrition Sales, Inc., for animal feed donations that we had tabled from the August 15th meeting. I think there's a sheet that was just passed out that answers the questions that were brought forward, and if everybody feels comfortable with it or has some more discussion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 17 is the approval to increase the block rental fees by $50 each in the Parks Department. We had gotten rid of some of the fees that we thought didn't make sense, and it just made sense now to increase this, so it was kind of fair all the way around. Alderman Miller, did you have anything you wanted to say about that?
No, it's like the Park Department came in with a 75 cent decrease because of the use of the kitchen. It may, that's just part of the room agreement. And so I think it's $50 with more than ample, the money that was lost on that $75, more than ample replaced it with just $50. And also, as you noted in this thing, and his letter to us that this would not apply to business, anyone that's already got a leased room, already approved, it'll remain the same and just be on new rooms.
Thank you, Alderman Miller. Is there a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 18 is the approval to surplus the equipment that's of no value in the Park Department that is listed on your agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. 19, in a lot of these things that we're bidding out for ARPA funds and things of that nature, they're always asking us if we've officially adopted these procurement guidelines. Pam has put this on there for y'all to adopt these guidelines, the CFR 200 federal guidelines, and Mississippi State procurement guidelines, 31-7-1 through 31-7-423, for bids and purchases as required by the Mississippi State and federal government. We may have done this in the past, we don't know, but let's do it tonight to make sure that we are on record as using this procurement process. If I could have a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Item 20 is the approval of MOA between MDOT and Hernando for the roundabout at US 51 and West Oak Grove, and for me to sign it. This is just a formality that has to be done. It's basically saying they approve all the design and everything, and we're all ready to move forward with this contract. Can I have a motion on that item? Come on, Alderman Miller.
Hey, it's yeah, wait, man.
I want you to make the motion.
No, I ain't no way.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
That was a we got, but I...
A unanimous aye. Motion passes. Item 21, the approval to purchase the right-of-way easements for the Oak Grove Road Roundabout. Joe Frank has gotten appraisals for us, and we just want to authorize Joe Frank to use those numbers on the appraisals to make offers to the property owners. And y'all have to authorize that.
And the property owner hadn't even been notified of these numbers, have they?
Not at the moment. If they'd been notified, we would do it.
All right, but they hadn't been notified of the number, because they keep on being told that ain't no numbers out there yet.
They are now.
I have a question about that when y'all get a change of page.
Yep, come on up, because this is the time to do it, if you'd like to come up.
My brother owns the property. I'm speaking for him. He lives in Gulf Shores, Alabama. My M's property right there on the southwest corner of Oak Grove Road.
Little triangle there that's going to...
The triangle there.
Yeah, yeah.
And you know, it started out, and you just have to know my brother. He's a very detailed guy in what he does, and of course, the fellow's been renting the house there for him for probably 10 or 15 years. And Barry calls him on the phone and says, hey, you know, they're putting stakes out in your front yard.
He called me and talked to me about that.
And, of course, the ham immediately flew off the hook about that. We call him Ham. His name is Richard. But in any event, it was, you know, when I said, well, Ham, everything's going to be okay, you know, that the roundabout's going to come, I think it's going to be good for everybody. Well, the problem is, we had this meeting tonight, looks like y'all got all of this literature in here about what all, everything was going to be approved. Nobody told my brother this meeting was happening or not. Not a word. He didn't know a thing about it. And his property is the property that is going to be most adversely affected by this.
Now, all we're doing is authorizing Joe Frank to go tell everybody, here's what the values are, and to make the offer.
Okay, well, I understand that, but still, at that, it's kind of like this. I'm glad you brought that up, because you can catch a whole lot more flies with honey than you can anything else. And I'm just trying to help y'all out, that you need to keep him in the loop about what's going on with his property, because he's called me up and he is worrying me out about this, and I can't give him all the answers.
Gotcha. Well, he's got my cell number now?
He does.
Because he called me...
He told me that he had talked to you about this, but I wanted to tell you that, you know, I don't really understand how the easement is working with energy, with what they were. But, you know, my brother bought that house from an engineer back several years ago.
Yeah.
And I'm quite certain that the man that he bought it, that he bought the house from would probably not have built that house right there if he thought that he was going to walk out of his front door and power lines were going to be 20 feet out his front door. And if everybody goes up there and looks at it right now, they've got those power lines, they cut all those people. And I realize it's energy, and there's an easement, but energy can't come take what they want. At some point, somebody would have had to sign for energy to have that right-of-way moved back into those people's front yard.
So I think where they marked the entry right-of-way through there is not just the entry right-of-way, that's the highway right-of-way. And they're okay by law to put their poles anywhere in the right-of-way.
Well, that's what I'm saying to you is, is no one would have built the house right there knowing that the highway could be 20 feet out of their front door. And when my brother purchased this property, that would have had to been in a seller's disclosure to say that this property, that the City of Hernando, MDOT, whoever can take this property to your front door. And if that is not documented, that is not going to fly. Now, he's okay with the right-of-way, but what I want to tell you is, is that if we start moving telephone poles in front of probably five or six neighbors' houses, you know, right up where you walk out, and you're 20 feet out your front door looking at the telephone poles and the highway, you know, I understand you could do, that at the end of the day, it could probably happen, but that's not right for the people.
So let's do this. We'll ask Joe Frank to see how old that right-of-way is, and I'll also make sure that, and I'll talk to your brother if he need me to, but make sure he knows that that project, that entry he's doing, has nothing to do with our roundabout. They're upgrading lines and coming all the way down Oak Grove and down 51, which is separate from the roundabout. We're having them move a couple of poles, but it's not that.
You don't think that, what I'm getting at is, is that the way they got this marked is they're fixing to cut down all the trees in his front yard to make this work.
So what I can do is get Dane Chamberlain to call and talk to him. Dane's the rep with entry, and he can tell him what their plan is. Because I don't know what their plan is, quite frankly. I just know they're upgrading service, because we called, we had the same thing happen to a property owner on Oak Grove. He said, oh, my goodness, are these y'all's marks up here in the yard? And we said, no, that's entry. They were just marking the road right-of-way so they would know where they could operate. It just so happened to happen at the same time.
Well, my question too is, is at the same time, before they adversely affected, you know, eight or 10 homeowners in the City of Hernando, all they've got to do is move the power lines over there on the park side of the road, and everything is fine. They haven't, I mean, it's going to be six, one half dozen of other. I realize they're going to have to do a little more clearing over there on the park side of the road to loop across and go down the park side. But, you know, in my personal opinion, there's no need to adversely affect all of those people's property up and down 51 Highway. That's not right.
I don't know how much...
I mean, you have to go up there. What you need to do is, is y'all meet right up there and look at where they, and you can pull up in my brother's driveway, and you can look at the stakes that energy is put out for what they're recommending to do. And anybody is going to say, you know, that's not right. As a matter of fact, I don't know how they'll ever do what they're going to do, because you've got the new meat market there, and then you've got the Babri's Red Building there, and if it kept on going, it would go right through the middle of town.
Well, I'll call and talk to Dane, and that's a good idea. If they have a way they can move across the street, that is a good solution. But I don't even know exactly where they're going to put them. They were just marking right-of-ways.
Right. Well, I'll finish with this.
Yeah.
It would be very helpful if my brother had a detailed drawing of everything that was going to go on, both in front of his house and at the roundabout. So it would put him at ease, because, you know, he's frustrated by it.
Can you get Mr. Brankston a copy of the plans?
Detailed drawing.
All right. Good deal. And you got, I gave you his number. You've been able to talk to him on the phone, haven't you? Okay.
He's called me.
Yeah, okay.
Right. He told me he had.
Well, thank you.
But, you know, there's a difference between talking with someone on the phone, and then all of a sudden, we're up here putting stakes in people's front yard, like we're moving forward progress, like, you know, and I'm looking at this, and I'm reading as everybody's fixing to approve this, and we've got a missing link here in what's going on.
It's just unfortunate that entry decided to upgrade their power grid right along. They're doing it out here down Commerce as well. It's just an upgrade. They're doing to make their...
Well, the deal about it is, is if the board of Alderman was dealing with them, and I understand they have their easements and so forth, but I'm fixing to tell you, in 1950, that easement wasn't worth what they're drawing on paper. Somehow, somewhere, somebody had to sign off on that to move that. And if that is indeed the fact, then they need to produce that document before they proceed.
And you'll look at his property line description for them. Okay. Yeah, well, you've already got it, because you've got the other corner. Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Brankston.
All right.
All right. So does anybody have any trouble with authorizing Joe Frank to offer the appraised values?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next is the approval of the MOU with Mississippi Outdoor Stewardship Board of Trustees for the Renaissance Park Enhancements for Natural Resource-Based Outdoor Recreation, Environmental Education, Eco-Tourism, and Sustainability Grant totaling $1,737,060, and for me to sign that agreement. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, item 23 is the approval of the Cooperative Public Ambulance Service Agreement between DeSota County, City of Hernando, City of Hornet Lake, and City of Oliver Branch. And this is so they can give us money to purchase, towards purchasing a new ambulance.
Now, if I understand, they're going to give us $135,000 six months from, or 60 days from when we approve this. Is that going to be putting the budget towards the ambulance we're going to purchase?
It is. And actually, we don't have it in the budget you're going to approve, so it'll kind of be a surprise in there. I didn't want to throw a bunch of other stuff in there. We could amend this budget for that $135,000 if you want to, but it's not...
I think we put $300,000 in. Would this ambulance going to be $435,000, or would that number be reduced?
The ambulance itself's going to cost 300, right, approximately?
300 total.
And this is 135. We'd take that down to...
So this number's going to be reduced. Okay.
So that would actually hopefully give us some more contingency as we amend the budget later on. Can I have a motion to approve item 23?
Can I make a motion to approve the agreement?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. Item 24, we had talked about briefly during our budget discussion at the special meeting. As y'all know, the garbage rates are being raised on the city. I think our attorney negotiated the best deal we could get. There have been several rate hikes over the last few years that have not been passed on to the citizens of Hernando. I think the Public Works Department's done a good job of keeping the rates down as low as we can, but we are at the point of going into deficit territory if we don't raise those rates to coincide with what they're going to be charging us. So Lee, did you want to address that?
That's pretty much it. We have an increase in garbage rates, an increase in extra trash carts, and an increase in recycling carts. As you see in front of you, the garbage rates will go to $22 per original can. For extra cart, the citizens will be charged $6.63. And to have recycling, they will pay $6.63 per can for recycling.
But just straight garbage is 22, with nothing else.
That's right.
And just to be clear and remind the public, I know you remember Alderman Ross, but it's that $22 also includes their debris pickup at the curb four times a month, and also street sweeping as well.
Right.
Up from 17...
Up from 1750, I think.
1750 is what it currently is.
And I think it was raised to that in 19, or 17. 17. So it's been six years. Six and a half years.
I think everybody understands the need to increase it, but, you know, we just make sure we hold them accountable for when they miss people's property. That's been a...
Yes.
Big deal. I get almost daily...
Thank you.
Complaints on that. I know we have a plan, I think $50 or whatever we talked about. You could just, 100, if you'll stay on that, please.
Oh, good.
And so Stephen, we did get the contract signed by them...
Yes.
...late last week. So Lee and I met this morning. He is going to ask them in writing exactly how they want to be notified of missed carts, and we will start that process as soon as they answer us, which hopefully will be tomorrow.
Absolutely.
So we got a call, I get calls all the time.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And then I just, I call straight to the lady, Lindsay, that handles it. And even I am going to have to start taking those and putting them on the official list out at the front desk so that they're tracked properly. And so if y'all have some, Casey keeps that list up at the front desk.
That's what I go through with all the minds going through them.
Just to reiterate, what's the timeframe that they have to make it, to go back and pick it up?
24 hours.
Okay. I thought it was 24 hours. I just wanted to reiterate it.
No problems.
This, we're talking about an increase.
And we're going to try to get phone numbers from the customers who have been missed so we can call them back 24 hours later and say, didn't get picked up?
Okay.
If not, then we can document it and get a phone.
Take a measure, however we need to do that.
Yeah. And I think the customers or the citizens are going to appreciate us making that follow-up phone call to them as well. Everybody likes a follow-up.
Yes.
We definitely need to stress to the citizens, though, that if that night, of your trash day, if it's not picked up that night, notify us. That way, we can start holding people accountable instead of calling a couple days after. You know, sometimes it's nice to give them a little break or, you know, give them a shot at picking it up, but most of the time, we see it's not getting picked up. So the day, you know, the night of, the next morning, I'll see y'all on that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion, or anyone here that would like to speak to the topic? If not, is there a motion?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Okay, item 25 is the official public hearing on approval of the fiscal year 24 tax levy and budget. Any salary increases will begin on the first full payroll in October. That keeps it from being a nightmare for the Human Resources Department, just so we don't have split payroll. So the first full payroll is when the pay raises would take effect. So this is the public hearing. I'm declaring this the official public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? If not, are there any comments or questions from the board?
This changes to the budget presented on August 15th.
So that's just the difference, that's what y'all had asked of me to change at that meeting. It was actually August 17th, wasn't it? But anyway, those are the changes y'all asked me to make, and I just, those are the changes that have been made from the one we last looked at. And this budget totals, all the departments together, general fund, the ARPA funds, the utility funds, cemetery funds, all of them together, it's a $41,102,802 budget. And this is being done without a tax increase. I want to make that very clear.
Which is extremely important.
Mayor, I'd like to tell you and also our department heads, y'all did a good job. Might not like it, but y'all still did a good job. I know you wanted more, but sometimes the pie is just not big enough. So thank y'all for doing, you know, presenting a budget that's workable and that... So thank y'all for, for doing, you know, presenting a budget that's workable and that, that us as a board could, uh, massage and accept. And so we're gonna tell you that you did a good job and raising ain't what you expected, but if you read the papers and everything, some, some cities didn't even get a raise last year. So at least we got raised this two years on the road. So I think that's, you know, so we're doing something positive, but committing y'all on the, uh, and I think this is what, this is less budget hassle than we had in a while, which y'all will agree.
I've only been here a couple of years. You've been there a long, long, long.
But you was there the last time, man. Come on now, I'm being, I'm being nice now. See, Chad, you trying to make me, I'm, I'm trying, I'm being real diplomatic. I'm being nice.
It was very streamlined and easy.
Yes, it was.
To maneuver the numbers.
Good job, department here, sir, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're just looking for, just looking at the same process next year.
Is there any other discussion or vote or motion?
The $500,000 that was added to the 304 fund?
Yes.
Where is that reflected?
In, I think it's 304.
Let me get to that page. It is on the capital improvements of $3,300,000. That number when it was last presented was, it's in the line item 304, 30720. That was 2.8 million, now it's 3,300. Could you get to it?
I see it.
300-720.
So where does that 500 come from?
Uh, it would came out, we had a 570,000 contingency in that fund. So it came out of that contingency and dropped that contingency to 70,000. And really and truly, that fund, the only reason for a contingency there is if we had an, what y'all might consider an emergency paving project, but that money is meant to be spent on, on projects. There's no payroll in there, there's no, no operating funds. That money is meant, once it gets in here, for us to spend that tax money for the citizens to see. So that one doesn't need as much of a contingency.
Do we think we'll be able to get some roads done before it gets cold?
Joe, if we pick some, if the board picks some roads, you think you'll get some paved between October and?
Think so.
Okay.
We still are waiting on Pendulum and Edgewater.
We have, we have a contract on it.
Perfect. Thank you.
And we have a contract on Northern.
Yeah. And I anticipated those two being done and paid, so that's been accounted for in cash brought forward, being lower than it would have been.
Okay.
Cause I'm anticipating us paying those in this current budget.
Okay. Cause we've maxed.
Yep.
The other. We maxed 2023.
Yep.
Twenty-two, 23.
We should get those as well.
Perfect. I've had a few.
Joe Frank, could you and Lee also provide us with a list? We, we're working from a list. And everything that hadn't been approved to be funded, could we, could you send us this or have us a list that the next board needs on where it should take off it and start? Uh, cause if, uh, I, I hear what the mayor said, that the board should give y'all a list of streets, but I, I don't think that that's due diligence. I think we still need to work the process, because if we don't work the process, then we're gonna start, like little favoritism might jump in there. If we don't continue to look at the book that we have, uh, it might change, but at least let's first start there.
Yep.
Because some of the streets that we deem appropriate might be already on that list, all the thing I'm saying.
Yeah, cause we're getting close to finishing the list.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah. Some may have gotten worse than.
Are you, are you talking about the old Civil Link study?
Yeah.
But I plan on going through my entire ward and writing down all the streets and then comparing what you already have. Just.
We'll work on that, me and Lee and Joe will work on that and present y'all something.
Yeah.
Cause we need to, we need to approve at least some streets at the next board meeting if we're gonna get some done.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what, that's.
Early, early.
That's when the deep brain and this, you know, we, we got a unbiased set of eyes that looked at that.
Paid a pretty good bit of money too to do that.
Yes, we did.
Did.
Yeah.
So if I read this right, this gets our contingency in the general fund over a million dollars, is that correct?
Yes, I think it's a million and six, million and 6,000 maybe. So we hit, hit our goal this year.
Yes.
Any other questions?
And then we have a bond in here for the Renaissance Park.
Yeah, we have a bond payment that would pay the interest for the first year in there.
Maybe soccer lights, maybe is what we're gonna talk about.
You know, we're gonna probably put that on the agenda, next agenda for this board to discuss exactly how they wanna spend that so we can move forward on doing the bond issue. Cause that's, we're, we're gonna have to just jump on it and get rolling with it if it's gonna happen.
But could, could you, as we bring that up, ma'am, could you bring a list of?
Absolutely.
The product that already been spoken about and then we can, and we might want to shift some of them and.
Jared, Jared, I do have a list, and we've got some prices next to some things as well.
When does our first payment for the Civic Center begin? October 1st?
Did they finally get it to us signed? Okay. Yep.
And I think we had said we were gonna start our first payment in November.
November? We knew it was gonna be right at the beginning of the new budget year.
We'll put it on the next agenda to approve the signing. Actually, it's been approved for me to sign already, I think.
I'm not sure about it. They, everyone's signed it.
Okay. I'll get with you this week. Anything else? Alderman Piper, were you about to say something?
Yeah, sorry, I had to text my wife back real quick and make sure she, everything's good.
Keep your priorities right.
That's an important one. You can't skip over that one. So that's a tip for everybody, um, listening, I guess. Um, I, I mean, certainly we've seen, um, you know, pay levels significantly increase, uh, now going into a third budget and, you know, I think that we have, you know, we have great people in all of our departments and we need to, you know, make sure people are compensated and, and, uh, and all that. I think that one thing that we have to, you know, keep, keep in mind though is that these are, that there's not ever gonna be paid decreases most likely, right?
Right.
Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, right? So these are things that the city is committing to in perpetuity.
That's correct.
Right? It's four percent forever, right? Um, we, I know we talked about looking at, uh, increase in our, our contingency as much as possible. Um, and we got it over a million dollars, but I think it's, you know, which I think is great. It's a, it's a good step in the right direction. I really would like us to get to where we had that, that mark of 10% saved, cause I feel like that's the, I think Alderman Miller's mentioned that before, having, um, you know, three to six months of contingency built up. And I, I just don't feel like we're, we're anywhere close to that. And I know we're working towards it. Um, you know, to me, it's something where a difference in between having a, a 3% increase across the board to 4%, that's another 120 or 130,000 dollars we could put into contingency and be that much closer, um, to get into a better goal. So, um, I just think we should, we should consider that. And I, I wasn't able to make it to the, the budget workshop, but that would have been, I think when we had, um, some initial talks around it, we wanted to see what the numbers looked like for 3, 4, and 5%. Um, and I don't know if those were looked at at the workshop or not, but.
They were. We actually had 3, 4, 5, and 6% here.
Okay. That, that to me is, um, we started, you know, five was the original proposal. I think we can, I think we can live with three and I think that it should be something we should consider. I know nobody likes hearing that, but I get it. I don't, I'm with y'all.
This also includes a 2% increase of the public employment retirement system.
For the last quarter, yes it does.
I feel like there's, I just, I have a feeling there's some hard economic times ahead. Um, we've been very blessed here in Hernando to have growth and economic prosperity, but it, it's, it is something where I don't, I don't wanna have to make hard decisions in a later budget because of, you know, something that we could potentially avoid.
I think Alderman Piper, that, that, I think we did, we, uh, we talked, I think, at depth about, you know, the percentage. And as you, as you will notice, you are, no, uh, one thing that we were looking at, it wasn't me, I said me, I said we, I keep on, I'm trying to be inclusive. One thing I was looking at also is that, uh, as you look around the other municipalities, their retention rate is way lower than ours. We have a great retention rate because we do the best that we can to treat the employees fairly, have a decent working environment for them, and also that come with conversation. And, uh, I understand that I've been a big pusher for increasing the, the contingency. But I feel along with others, as we, we, we looked at and talked about it, that, that 4% was that, that medium at this time versus 3, especially versus 5. 5 was just, to me was just, I wouldn't, I was not gonna support a 5%. But I thought looking at everything else, that 4% was that, you know, that, that compromise, that, that factor that we could do and, and at the same time show the employees of this city that, that we are, that we see that they're struggling too. Like I said, when you talk about financial hard times, yes, I, I believe that too, and just like our employees gonna have them hard times too. And if, if you look at some of the rate, uh, pay that some of our employees receiving now, 4% it made them better, but it really didn't do what it need for them to be able to survive and live.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you at all on that. I think that one thing I think we should consider when we're looking at compensation is the, the, um, is competitive pay rates on the, on the lower part of our pay scale, right? The pe, like people that make $15 an hour are working, you know, they may have to work outdoors, they may have to work some of the hardest jobs in the city, probably gonna have a high turnover rate at that rate of pay. Um, you know, so that would be something that I think we need to, we might need to fine tune a little bit more. But those are also jobs that when we took office, they were making $10 an hour. So they're, those positions have seen.
Or eight.
Or eight dollars an hour. So some of us have seen a 50% pay increase. And none of those people were most likely still working those jobs. So it's really just the position, not necessarily the person that's get, that's getting the
Any other conversation on that?
I just, bigger wise of 4%.